Hey, is this working?
Yeah.
Ian, how are you?
Any of that. Hey, Bill. Oh.
Hey, how are you doing?
I was just turning it over to you and you didn't hear me with my introduction. But I just really, really, I personally want to thank you for making time for this. I know it was a quick turnaround. I was telling the commissioners that we just got the contract approved on Monday. But the city council, after a bit of negotiation and figuring out all kinds of things on our end, what this, what this task would look like. And so the commissioners had a lot of questions for you, I know. But if you can tell them who you are and a little bit of the work that you're doing, then, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, that's, that's, that's great. Thank you very much for the interview, Robin. And we're, we're really excited about working with Gig Harbor again, this time on a comprehensive plan, which, which will be a great process. So I'm a principal here with SCJ Alliance based out of the Spokane office. I've been with SCJ for about five years now, a little, little less than five years. But before that, I had a company called Studio Cascade, which I ran for about 20 years. And that was the iteration where I had been working with Gig Harbor. Actually, I believe I did some work with Gig Harbor as SCJ Alliance as well. So our, our background really is about planning and comprehensive planning. I've been doing growth management planning basically since there's been a Growth Management Act. And I've watched, I've watched the act evolve and I've watched local agency responses evolve too over, over the years. So excited to embark, embark on this, this process with you. You know, Robin, I actually have a slightly modified presentation from, from the interview, which I, which I can go ahead and go and go through if you think that would be helpful.
Leave it to the commissioners. Does that sound good?
Sure.
Let's do it.
And then maybe that'll be, that'll be a nice, a nice way for us to embark on the, on the Q and A and see, see where this, where this goes. So I'm going to see if I can share my screen here. And I'm not going to do anything fancy with my PowerPoint. I'm just going to go ahead and save it or share it, notes and all. And you should, you should be able to see it right now, picture of a, of the trolley.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. I love it when a plan comes together. So right, 2024, that's our, that's our deadline here for a comp plan update and, and development regulations audit so that we can get consistent with the requirements of the Growth Management Act. So, sorry, I'm working at an unfamiliar workstation here. So it's a little bit awkward for me sometimes.
Do we get a little more volume every day?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I, if I can turn up my audio. I don't know how to do that without stopping the presentation. Let me see.
It's a little bit far as the hallway. It's, we're up as far as we go.
Yeah, okay. So let me stop this then. Boy, this is strange. Thank you for bearing with me on this.
No, that's it. Yeah, very much. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we've tried turning up ours again, Bill. If you want to give us a task. Except now I can't hear you at all.
How about this? Is this any better?
I can hear that.
Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry about that unfamiliar workstation and my monitors are also switched. I'm used, you know, I'm, I'm used to having my left monitor on the left side and my right monitor on the right side. That's not how this machine is, is treating me. So we're, we're going to go back to sharing here and see, see if we can, if we can pull this one off. All right. So when we were pulling together our proposal, we wanted to make sure that we were in sync with some of the emerging issues here in Gig Harbor. And, and what we were hoping for is the opportunity to work with you to develop a vision for the community that is spatially relevant, understanding that different parts of Gig Harbor are different from the others. And so we, we just wanted to make sure that we captured that early on in our, in our conversation about the plan. We also are thinking that it's likely there's going to be a level of transformation in your transportation environment as you look at ways to accommodate growth and some of your multimodal transportation objectives. Housing attainability is a huge issue throughout the Puget Sound area and Gig Harbor is no exception. So we're, we're looking forward to working on that with you, making sure that whatever policies come out of this process, respect the need for fiscal balance so that your timing and investing in your infrastructure in a way that makes sense and your services provision. You have a front row to climate change. And so whether it's a question of resiliency or retreat, how do, how do we manage things like sea level rise and changing climatic conditions? And then also, we really do believe that having a, a plan informed by community voice and ultimately supported by community members is, is reliant on equitable and compelling engagement. And so we want to make sure that we're on the same page with you there. And we invest in that in the way that, that it needs to be supported for the, for the process. So those are, those are things that, that we were identifying as important considerations for this update. And we'll see, you know, the process will bear out and see, see if we're on track. So this is the, the senior staff here pictured. And these are also the folks who are involved in the interview. You probably recognize a couple of these faces, but Kendra and Victor are both going to be involved in this process. They're going to be taking the lead on the transportation side. And they have a lot of familiarity with Gig Harbor. And we hope to be able to blend their work, not only in the technical world, but also in the policy world into your comprehensive plan and incorporate that. But as you can see from the org chart, we have, we have a nice, robust team plugged in to help us out with this process. We have an economist from Leland Consulting Group. We've worked with them for, oh, I don't know, almost 20 years on a variety of projects. And we found them to be really astute and also relevant. I mean, sometimes economists can go down the rabbit hole. The, these, these guys are, are really good at making salient recommendations and insightful ones as well. But we also have, have a depth of SCJ staff coming out of our Gig Harbor office and our Lacey office and our Seattle office, helping on this process too, to cover some engineering issues, making sure we have the right kind of GIS support for mapping and modeling. And then also graphics and urban design support and then code support as well. I mean, we talked about a comprehensive plan, well, comprehensive topics. We've got staff on hand to, to help us address it. And this, this is something of a mashup of the schedule from our interview last fall to where we are now. And so we're, we're going to start working right away on compiling baseline data, economics, community demographics, and also synthesizing what you have in terms of existing policy into a single policy framework. We started doing that a little bit about a year and a half, two years ago, when we were looking at some land use policy and development code issues in Gig Harbor. So we're going to continue that work and, and integrate all of your various special purpose plans and your comprehensive plan into a unified policy framework. So we can see how well they're playing together and make sure we have consistency from one element to the next. And I, I, I'm really excited about this. Maybe it's just my, my wonky personality, but I'm really, really jazzed about making sure that we have land use and transportation, economic development and housing policy all work together. And we found that sometimes when comprehensive plans have been prepared in the past, they've really been relatively siloed, where you had land use policies focused only on land use and transportation policies focused only on transportation. But you know, really that transportation policy has some land use implications that may or may not necessarily be recognized on the land use policy side and vice versa. So anyway, our policy framework helps us decode some of that stuff and make sure we're, we're overlapping appropriately. Don't have redundancy and that we have internal consistency. And as, as this process goes forward, I think you'll see, you'll see how that can really be a very, very valuable tool. So that's, that's part of our phase one is constructing some of that policy framework and getting that baseline data pulled together. And then we're going to start working with you to actually generate a draft comprehensive plan, building a lot on what you have existing, but open to changes, of course, to address changes and circumstances today. And then also making sure that, that we're blending Kendra and Victor's work on the transportation side. We are readying for an environmental impact statement to be integrated into this document. And I, I don't know now if that's something that is necessary. In our earlier conversations, Robin, we've been thinking, you know, maybe there's environmental documentation that's enough to support a comp plan update. And perhaps the level of change envisioned in this comprehensive plan really isn't great enough to warrant an EIS. So that's a conversation that we're just going to have to have as, as this process moves forward. We're ready to do it if necessary. And, and we've done this in the past before, where we've actually integrated the SEPA document into the, into the comprehensive plan, pretty cost effective way of doing it. We're just not sure that we have to take that step yet. And then we're also actively looking to engage the community in this thing. I guess the, the, the selection process had a level of engagement because it's been open to the public, but it really has been actively soliciting, soliciting, soliciting public engagement. But, but we do want to kick this off as soon as we can. A set of orientation interviews, we'd like to get scheduled here actually in the next couple of months so we can get, get underway and understand what the political lay of the land may be. And actually tonight's conversation is a good way for me to start understanding some of what's on your mind, what's on the community's mind and how we can approach some of our early engagement efforts. And just, just a little bit more about, about our outreach. We've been in Gig Harbor before, we've just loved it. So definitely looking forward to doing it again. We had kicked around the idea of having an advisory committee, but, and Robin checked me on this, but we actually think the planning commission may be a suitable advisory committee on this. You, you're drawn from a fairly broad sector of the community. And so we think that, that bringing you in for regular updates and regular council, and I don't mean council, COU and CIL, I mean COU and SEL. So we can really get, get the benefit of your wisdom and perspective and, and wrap that into our process. And so we'd like to schedule these checkpoints where we can, we can meet with the planning commission, talk to you about what we're finding and get your reaction and some of your, some of your input. Orientation interviews, we're hoping to, to interview a couple of dozen, or at least invite for interviews, a couple of dozen community members, people who are thought leaders in the community or maybe represent specific constituents that you want to make sure are included in this. To one-on-one conversations or small group conversations with, with me. And we'll, we'll take notes and use that to, to help establish the foundation for the public conversation from that point forward. We can talk more about that here during the Q and A tonight. And then, then we, we want to take advantage of the diminishing COVID wave and have some in-person events. We love doing studios, we love doing pop-ups and in-person workshops and we hope to be able to do that. However, COVID has taught us that there's definitely value in an online presence for these, for these types of projects. And whether it's having an online open house, virtual open house, interactive elements on a website, or just making information available to people online. It's something that, that really has become a matter of course, and actually quite, quite, quite an important avenue to, to get feedback. And so we're looking forward to working with you on that too. And also branding it appropriately. I mean, we can either brand it as a standalone comprehensive planning project, or this is where I'm inclined to go, make sure that it echoes the city's brand. So it really does reinforce that continuity between what's happening in this comprehensive plan and its policy development and how the city conducts its day-to-day business. It's an important bridge to, to reinforce. And so that's, that's, that's something we'll be talking about with, with you as well. I mentioned Kendra and Victor on the, the transportation side. This, this is going to be a great opportunity, I think, for, for these, these two to work not only at the technical day-to-day level here in Gig Harbor, but also start thinking about how the transportation environment may change over the years. And, you know, whether it's congestion reduction or whether it's accommodating multimodal transportation, non-motorized transportation, cooperating with our regional partners, or, or, or just rethinking about how people in general, generally get, get around. It's something that, that, that we'll be integrating into this, into this process. So they'll be revisiting the, the All Moats Transportation Plan, Gig on the Go. Some of you may remember this. Make sure that we have effective implementation strategies in place for that and that we're interweaving and taking another look at the transportation capital investments of which priorities actually should be advanced and maybe which ones should be, should be deferred until later. Part of this will include some rather technical modeling from Victor and interpreting that with Kendra and taking a look at how different land use scenarios may impact a different transportation setup demands, how the system may need to respond to that. And then really making sure that we're having effective integration between transportation policy and the rest of the policy universe in Gig Harbor. Community design, for instance, yes, you can bet transportation's a huge component of that. So how do we make sure the policy and those two elements are working together as well as they possibly can? I talked a little bit about integration of SEPA and I, and I don't want to talk about this much tonight because we just really don't know yet. I mean, we're capable to deal with it if it comes up, but we're just going to have to let the process decide a little bit how, how deeply we dive into it. But we're, we're, we're ready and we can, we can integrate SEPA into this so that it follows the same process as the comprehensive plan's development and is really almost. I don't want to use the term invisible, but I'm going to use the term visible. It really is almost invisible process-wise and the, and the overall creation of the comprehensive plan. We do, we do look forward to a collaborative relationship with, with staff at a variety of levels. You know, when, when this comprehensive plan and code work is done, we'll, we'll fade into the distance and it's going to be the city's plan to own and administer. And so we want to make sure that staff really has a very visible presence from, from the initiation of this process all the way through to its completion. And so that's something that's really on our mind to do this. At the same time, we don't want to overburden staff, right? We want to make sure that we're adding value and that we're using staff to the extent staff is available. But definitely making sure staff is visible at the public meetings and, and that we benefit from staff's advice as we're generating draft material. We will be turning to staff to help us out in building our project library at the, at the beginning so that we have all of the relevant plans and policies that, that we can reference and that we understand a little bit about the projects in the pipeline and what, what some of the issues are in the community that, that we have to make sure we pay close attention to. Now, we're also going to be looking at staff to be the public face of the process. So as people have questions, residents, business people have questions about the plan, other agencies have questions about the plan, they can turn to staff and that we are equipping staff appropriately so that they can engage and be the, the effective ambassador to this process that, that we really, really hope they, they need to be and can be. So a little bit about SCJ, I'm always a little bashful bragging about, about our team. But so consider this not a brag, consider this only as information. We have, we have a bunch of recent and ongoing experience planning within the PSRC world and, and the growth management. We've also been working with Commerce to update some of the growth management legislation that is, that is in, in the works for this, this current legislative session. We're, we're very sensitive to the interface between community design, land use and transportation, economic development, housing, all of the stuff that goes into it. And part of that is because we have so many disciplines within, within our company. We do, we do actively involve GIS modeling. It's more than just mapping tasks. It's, it's really understanding how the systems work. And so we, we use it as an analytical tool and also as an informational one when it's time to start having conversations with the community, with you and the planning commission and also with the city council. We, we really do put a lot of stake in our engagement innovation. We love it. It's the heart of my personal practice. I love talking to folks and hearing what they have to say and, and, and being able to share with them how their input really is influencing the planning process. It's, it's something that to me is a personal joy in what I do. And, and I am looking forward to reconnecting with the community. Perhaps some of the individuals I've already had an opportunity to work with over the years, whether it's, you know, looking at arts program or just some of the folks that we, that we met and, and had conversations with during our transportation work a few years ago. So that's pretty much where, where we are with this. So thanks for bearing with me on this presentation and I look forward to, to our Q and A. I can find my screen here. All right, I think we're back.
Okay, so I guess this is the time to open it up for questions for Bill. So who would like to start?
I have one question. Okay. Can you give us a couple of examples of who, of what communities you have worked with, especially when it comes to, you know, GMA or comprehensive plan?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, Big Harbor, well, worked with Big Harbor on, on a high-level land use policy review, your land use element and also arts and culture element, comprehensive plan element. But then we've also worked with San Juan County. We've worked with Monroe, we've worked with Port Angeles and Normandy Park, Empirian. We're working now with Pulse Bowl, worked with Newcastle before, we're working with them again. Also Woodinville, so and DuPont. I mean, it's, it's really, it's really a relatively long list. Worked with island communities, we've worked with suburban communities, bedroom communities. We worked with job center communities. We're in the process now of working with, with Auburn, who is struggling with how to become a new center. Comprehensive plans in Spokane, I mean, it's, it's, I, I can probably go on for quite some time, talking about the comprehensive plans we've, we've written. Maybe, maybe you can tell me a little bit about why, why that's important to, to you and Gig Harbor? And I might be able to dial down a little bit, some of the issues that we struggled with and how we might want to look at that in, in Gig.
Well, since I'm fairly new to the commission, I don't actually know when you were working with Gig Harbor on the arts and culture or the other portion.
Oh, 2019.
Okay, so that is actually very recent. And then it's a matter of, of communities that are similar. They are similarly dependent on tourism. They are similarly relatively affluent bedroom communities. They have similar challenges on, with multimodal transportation and having transportation availability. They have, I, I don't know what other communities have had challenges with how they've developed in the fairly recent past and the transportation or infrastructure issues that have rocked up as a result of that.
Right. Right, yeah, those are, those are all great points. And I think, I think most of those communities that I mentioned have been struggling with those, those issues to varying degrees. I started thinking immediately about Woodinville and how their, their tourism economy has really exploded over the last 20 years. And, and it's, it's changing things and, and it's changing the type of permanent resident who looks to live in Woodinville.
It's changing the very shape, what it looks like, but they are also now losing some of the things that created what they are.
Right, right. And that, I really, I'm, I'm really sensitive to that. And I think that Woodinville, maybe, maybe more so than other communities, is trying to concentrate that change in a fairly well-defined area. You know, the schoolhouse in downtown areas really are quite a bit different today than they were a decade ago. The, the older residential neighborhoods in the hillsides, even though they've been developing more, they've been developing in a type and character that's pretty comparable to what the community had been used to seeing. And so they, they were able to absorb some of their tourism and direct it into some specific areas. I think, I think in places where it's maybe driving the greatest degree of changes in their industrial landscape, where some of their warehousing and logistics uses are turning into light manufacturing and agricultural value-added types of uses.
I think to follow up a little bit on Commissioner Snodgrass, I think what her question is, I, I think one of the issues that we're faced here with here in Gig Harbor is there's a perception, and I hear it on the street, and I think among ourselves, we've probably talked about this from time to time, that maybe Gig Harbor is being overdeveloped and it's too, is losing some of its character, particularly in the area of deforestation, environmental kinds of issues that are happening. So where have you worked before that you've seen these kinds of concerns coming out of the community?
Right, San Juan County, most, most recently. And I just, I just want to have an audio check. My, my computer system has gone a little bit on the fritz. Are you still able to hear me?
I hear you perfectly.
Okay, very good, thank you. Yes, San Juan County, worked, worked with them just a year and a half ago on their comprehensive plan update. And they were dealing with the types of issues that you were just talking about, both at, at an urban scale, trying to figure out how to manage those types of character-defining issues, tree canopy and open space in, in East Sound and in Friday Harbor. But then also looking at it as a, a way to maybe reinvigorate the agricultural economy in areas that are being developed hand over fist to address the swell in tourism and lately the COVID-driven remote workforce. So I think, I think that's, that's an example. Another one, right, actually working with Port Townsend right now too. And I'm, I'm just talking about my personal experiences. And other people in the company that are on this team also have other experience in other places. But we're, we're working with Port Townsend where similar, similar concerns about the intensity of development, the, the the attachment people have to certain physical landmarks that that, you know, may maybe a risk of of going away. And so I think those are, those are two two more direct examples in Washington State, I've also.
We lost you.
Oh, but we can't hear you.
We lost audio.
Lost your audio, Bill.
I guess maybe while he's, Bill's working on that.
Sure.
The city has hired S.
SCJ.
SCJ, right?
Yep.
So I think I'd like to take the question and ask you all, what, why these guys, how do they relate to Mr. Snodgrass's question? I don't want to hear, that's great, except, but what was it compelling for you all as the staff to recommend? And in in relationship to how our city is really?
His, his familiarity with the city and and his work here separated, separated his firm and and Bill himself from, you know, the other, the other folks that responded. And I think, well, a couple other things. I'm trying not to be distracted by Bill on the go, there is. The the breadth of experience, but but, I mean, and we'll talk about this as as the process moves on. But, you know, the the role, my understanding, and when I've worked with consultants in in, you know, similar contexts, the policies and goals come from the community, right? This, he's not going to say you need to do this, that or the other. He's in his firm, their, their role is to get other information, gather input, what is the community seeing as problems, and and we we've all heard that. Here are the options, given that we have legislation that is compelling us to do certain things. We have responsibility to commerce and and the checklist that I I threw at you all. There are certain things that we have to show in our our plan projections. Where the, you know, how many people, where are they going to live, how are they going to get around? But how we do that is an interactive thing. So so, you know, Bill's experience in in Gig Harbor is is great, and he's a known entity. His, his transportation engineers have worked with Public Works. I'm not looking at you anymore. It's, I feel like I'm in a movie. So so that that helps, because we do want somebody who's familiar with this area. And, you know, it's not an absolute requirement, but it's certainly something that we were more comfortable with. But again, he's, he's kind of the broker. This is the information that we've gathered and put together, these are the options. This is what the 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 state law requires that we look at, how do we work together to to get that done? So, you know, it's a bonus that he and and his firm have familiarity, but, you know, it's not a requirement. Because again, this comes from the 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 community, and that's why the the public outreach i- is so important and involving the commission and that interaction. So, you know, these are things that have worked, you know, in other places, is that a good fit here? Those are the conversations that we're going to have, looking at the real data that tells us, you know, ah, I mean, so, so it's a combination, but just, you, so we're all clear that that this is the community's document. And they're, they're, they're helping us to to put it together, right?
Have we got you back, Bill?
I hope so.
Okay.
I buy enough time there, you were walking all over creation. Oh, do you have two mics on?
I did, I'm I'm back, I'm back to only one now. I I hope you can hear me.
You can.
I'm clear.
Can you hear us?
Excellent.
All right.
That pop off with a question here. One of the things I'd like to get into tonight is just what is expected from the planning commission? I've reviewed your statement of work and the deliverables. Could you just kind of run down what you expect with planning commission to get this stuff? When you, when you deliver a draft element plan, what do you want from us?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to deliver you a draft plan that you're already familiar with. And I'm hoping to deliver a draft plan that you've had a hand in creating, not necessarily because you you've written it, but because you've been involved in the process, really, from this meeting forward. So that's, that's something that is, that is on on my mind as we, as we move into this. So I would, I would actually turn it around to you a little bit and and get a, want want to get a sense for how much time and effort you would like to put into this in terms of being an ambassador of this plan to the community to participate in public events, maybe even host an occasional community workshop as a planning commission, and take a look at draft material, maybe even brainstorming with me a little bit along the way to to keep this, keep this process on track. So I I'd say that the process would benefit from just about every hour you can spend on it. And I'll, and I will not be bashful in asking for it. So you may, you may need to rein me back in what I hope from you.
A couple of follow-ups to that. With regard to the community interaction and feedback, who's going to, who who will author the website? Who will be the author of the social media stuff? Who's going to do that?
Yeah, we, we're planning to provide content. And then, you know, the the city, the city has a voice. And so we'll provide content, but I fully expect that there's going to need to be somebody at the city who edits it for presentation or maybe frames it so that it's consistent with the rest of the city profile, both on your website and in your social media posts. But we don't want anybody, oh, go ahead.
You envision doing some surveys, some polling of the population to 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 collect the thoughts of the residents?
Yes. Yes, yes, we do in a variety of ways. In a variety of ways.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Commissioner. So I'm looking at your website right now, see, and forgive me, because I was gone last two times, and I apologize, I'll cover up a later. So there's, I'm looking at your twenty sixteen city, Gig Harbor's twenty sixteen compliment elements, twenty eighteen development, see the level, it's on your website. Maybe I missed it, but are we, is this project looking at all these elements? Because the scope seems pretty focused on transportation and land use.
Well, those are the big.
Understood, but are, but is this, are we opening up every element of the complex?
Not every element, the the required element. So the checklist that if you had a chance to look at that, that is, those are the the sort of guardrails. We can change anything that we think needs a new, a new look, a new touch. But those, those requirements are sort of, you know, what we're, where we start and 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 we go from there. So, but there's still a lot. And and we've divvied up and and asked Bill and his firm to deal with the the elements that require the most data, research, input. So again, land use, housing, transportation, we have utilities, capital facilities. And so some of the things that, you know, arts and culture was touched not too long ago. There's probably not a lot, but there might be, you know, updating inventory and things like that. So sometimes it's really just updating in a literal sense, where we're putting, you know, projects that are no longer in the pipeline go away and and we throw in new projects and things like that. So some of it's just, yeah, I mean, that we've talked about, you know, the parks, the pros, parks, rack and open space elements, that's going to be a pretty, a pretty straightforward update. So, but to answer your question, yeah, I mean, everything that is is required under the GMA is is going to be, is going to be looked at and.
Do we have the ability if we want to look at other elements as a result of these conversations?
Sure, sure. I mean, it it's, you know, it it is, it is, the whole document is supposed to be, you know, seen as a whole, even though, like Bill was saying, and and I really appreciate it. Because now when you read, at least for me, outsider coming in, it really does look like they don't speak to each other sometimes, the different elements, and it really should, there should be a flow visually and how the the policies interconnect. And so that's going to be a big part of of our work with Bill and his and his firm to make sure that there's continuity and that it all reads like a coherent and attractive document, which it doesn't right now. In many ways.
What, we we've talked a lot among ourselves, kind of about community involvement, and I think there's a lot of interest on this body in that area. What, if I go out on the street right now and I start talking to people about comprehensive plans, I'm going to get a blank book. And so how do we get people interested enough to come to a community event or to spend some time online looking at the material there or to fill out a survey? Bribery.
I think that's an excellent question. I would like to hear your answer to that, Bill, but I can I have, I I expect I have one idea that you've already thought of, because you're familiar with Gig Harbor already, the arts and culture aspect. But we have lots of really amazing community events down in the harbor that people show up to because they want to be there. And if we, if they can show up with primary colors and pretty pictures, people gravitate toward it, but we need those primary colors and pretty pictures. And that's what I want to be sure that we're going to have, okay?
Speaking the same language, absolutely. And we want to take advantage of all of those, whether it's a farmer's market or it's it's some cool, you know, art installation or the dragon boat races or whatever. Yeah, we want to be where the people are and make sure that we're hitting and not just the frequent flyers, the folks that don't come out normally to events, and that's, that's the biggest challenge.
One that is, may not be super convenient, but, and if we do it this year, because I don't know if we've done it the past couple of years, but the trick treating down in the harbor, that gets families that don't necessarily come out to the other events.
Great, I'm writing it down.
We'll bring you a big supply of candy and tax it out.
Some sort of bribery, but I think totally within the bounds of of our ethical construct.
Really good.
I love that, took it to the families, yeah. Excellent.
So how will we deal with UGA's annexation, especially as they relate to housing, transportation and other significant issues?
Right. So I'm, I'm actually hearing two, two different questions here about, about getting people interested. One, one is showing up, you know, what what types of events do we want to make sure we pay attention to and effectively attend? So the people are going to take the time to speak to us, or at least have the opportunity to speak to us and tell us what's on their minds. So that's, that, that's, that's a very important question. And and having a list of events that we can attend or maybe equip planning commissioners to attend is is something that that we need to really get, get squared away pretty soon. And then, then the other question is, how, how do we engage people's imaginations? And how do we, how do we make it worth their while to to really take the time to even think about this? Let alone give us their thoughts and opinions. And so for for me, it's about, it's about relevance and empowerment. And it's, it's making sure that we can create a message about what the comprehensive plan really might mean. So people can can sink their teeth into it and understand how a a document that's looking at a twenty-year horizon is relevant today. And then also make sure that we're delivering on the promise that's implied by even initiating the conversation. And that's giving people the ability to actually influence the direction the plan takes. And and we, we, we really take that very seriously. And if we can, if we can create that that proof of relevance and also that proof of of effectiveness, then then I think, I think we're going to go a long way to making, to making this this plan a a popular community process. And and I tell you, for for every community that we've worked in, it's been a different, it's been a different hook. And so, you know, the the orientation interviews that that we're looking forward to will help us understand how to voice that. When, when we, when we get a sense of what types of issues people are really struggling with, yes, okay, so annexation, urban growth area, housing, attainability, affordability for the people who who've who've been in Gig Harbor for generations. How do we get the next generation to be able to live here, too? So I think, I think there are there are threads for us to figure out how to pull together into a message that'll be compelling. And I think, so anyway, that's, that's, that's how I would answer that question. I I I don't know quite yet, but we know how to find out.
I have a couple of questions related to that, Will. Suggestion, we often talk about surveying people at the waterfront and all kinds of cool events down there, but Gig Harbor is much more than just the waterfront. Although we always tend to think of it as waterfront, that's the focus. But like, we've got these community centers that are out around town, you know, we have, we're regular people who go to shop and work, not, maybe not so much work, but shop. And like the North Side and Point Bosque, I think any kind of survey work needs to at least put something in those areas to gather some inputs from others that are not just frolicking on waterfront, but they're doing their daily business elsewhere. And the second thought, I thought would be, you talk about visioning and getting the opinion of the people. What about the school districts? Do you guys look to like a school boards for their ideas? Because they're important for transportation and all kinds of other aspects of the community. So I throw that suggestion out, maybe you already know that and sign your voice.
Yeah, no, that's great. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we will certainly involve the school district. And, you know, I I believe you're charging school impact fees. So, so we, we have to include the school district in our capital facilities plan here. But that's just one part of it, right? I think, I think what what's under your question is that they are, they are super important components of the community. And, you know, we, we want to make sure that we we engage them at at a much broader level. I also think about the Penn Net Parks District in in a similar way.
Also, another group where you can consider getting input from is homeowner and condominium owner associations, neighborhood associations, those kinds of groups, I don't know if the city has any list of those. But I do believe that there are several active homeowner and neighborhood associations in the city.
Can I shift gears a little bit?
Well, I I think we have one more question there, then let's, we'll turn to you.
I was, maybe in the direction you were going, shifting from our community, our citizens, but wanting to make sure Washstop's involved in this because they back for here, our city. And I I assume their plans will get incorporated into our, or at least there'll be some acknowledgement.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, they're already, yeah.
And what I'm thinking specifically like is, you know, on ramp, off ramp, sixteen improvements that are sitting critically.
Okay, I'm shifting gears. There's been a couple of minutes, there have been a couple of mentions of integrating CIPA through the document. I'm actually just kind of curious, will that have an impact on the permitting process if it does get integrated into, well, like typically, if anyone puts in an application to to build, to develop, CIPA is almost always required. It kind of depends, it, you know, there's a process. But will integrating CIPA into the comprehensive plan at least make it easier to know whether or not you're going to be required to have CIPA for development? Will it ease the process at all? Will it change it? Will it impact it in any way? At all? Will it change it? Will it impact it in any way?
That's a, that's a really good question. I I don't know, uh, I don't have the experience with CIPA, maybe Bill uh can answer this. Um, but I've been thinking about it too, because you can, you can structure CIPA in as as a sort of programmatic. Um, sort of big umbrella that um that can help with certain types of of developments and eliminate. The the duplicative requirement that, um, I don't know honestly what we. Um, what we're looking at in terms of um making it easier. You know, it's interesting because the 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 state has is contemplating all sorts of of changes uh to to make. The CIPA threshold um a little easier. In my relatively brief experience here, it it has not provided, like, it hasn't presented a a huge hurdle in and of itself. Um, it 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 goes along with, you know, other ways of permit streamlining, but that's a really good question. Um, we'll 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 flush that out to see if there's any anything that would be beneficial. Um, and it sort of do a cost benefit, uh, you know, on our part. Um, but the structure I'm familiar with, I just don't know how it will play out. Um, with our uh development regs and and the policies, but we can certainly talk about it. And maybe Bill has more insight uh along those lines than I do.
Well, that's a great answer. That's a great answer. You know, um, sometimes. People really invest in the EIS process and do something called the Plan to Action Environmental Impact Statement. And that's something that I think gets at the commissioner's question. Where you do such a detailed level of environmental review. That any development project that falls within those intensity thresholds presumed in the CIPA. Uh, does not have to do any subsequent environmental review. They just, they just can go ahead and march right to their permit. Um, and that that's a situation where a planned action EIS really does. Make it a lot easier to to get to get a permit per se. But, you know, Robin, you mentioned that CIPA really isn't that much of an obstacle, even absent that. And and I think some of the legislative changes that have recently been adopted and are now in the works. Uh, really provide a great deal more latitude in what types of projects are exempt from environmental review. Particularly those provided, you know, providing missing needle middle housing types. Yeah, yeah, so uh it might not necessarily be the, be the barrier that it has been in the past. One of the things that an integrated EIS, and and we'll have this conversation too, and I I don't, I don't mean to bore you. With this, um. But the, by integrating the CIPA in the in an EIS, it gives subsequent development. Projects an opportunity to point to a single environmental source. You know, and say, hey, you know, we're consistent with this, rather than having to research, you know, this wetland study or that. Tram- transportation study or that, you know. Dangerous hillside slope study, whatever, you know, the, you're able to point to the EIS, which then has tendrils into those other documents. So I mean, it does, it does make that a little bit easier, but again, I don't know that it's something that's that's hugely significant.
What is the threshold for needing to integrate in?
The threshold for for needing to?
We don't know yet whether or not we'll actually need to or will be integrating CIPA into it. If it's not really that much of a barrier, and it may not change things all that much, what is the? Either this state threshold for including it or the value of integrated?
Well, again, it, I mean, it depends, uh, it depends on on what sorts of policy changes.
It sounds like a lot of work, is why I.
The integrator, it feels like a lot of work to me too, but I haven't done it here. I worked on on environmental documents in in California and and they can be incredibly involved. And and very, very costly, so, you know, again, it's a conversation. To have, I don't know that that's necessarily the case, there's probably, you know. Like varying sort of gradations of of the policies that you feel like you need to look at. Um, and and or how you look at them. Um, so we obviously would have to do. Uh, sort of as a rough calculation of cost benefit, but and are we benefiting developers? Is that? We wanna benefit developers?
Benefiting the community.
Are we benefiting the community?
Establishing a, because everyone here has expressed concern and interest in climate change and environment.
Right.
And those things, so establishing a community standard is is that.
I think that's an interesting perspective on it, yeah. I I I think this is gonna be an interesting uh conversation moving forward, but I that's, that's a good way of framing it in in terms of. Um, you know, sort of incorporating or um. Establishing some kind of standard that that reflects the community's values in in the environmental document, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
It might be helpful for us as a commission to understand how CIPA, how the city of Gig Harbor um. Does CIPA, so this would be a non-project action CIPA. I assume there's some CIPA lead official. And that CIPA lead official is gonna evaluate these policies, and they're gonna determine whether or not it triggers. You know, a mitigated determination on certificates or a full environmental impact statement. Around the policies, and then I don't even know how you would get to a, like a uh. Uh, an action, a CIPA action that would, you know, move into a development regulation or support. Something else at the policy level, but maybe I just don't understand it enough. But um, some background about like what the city's role is and the authority under CIPA. Might be really helpful in um what the CIPA official uses in terms of criteria to make those stress threshold determinations. Uh, I I think would be helpful for us to understand.
In the context, I, in the context of of policy, it it can be challenging, so theoretically. You know, any policy that is, uh, you know, growth inducing or or, um, you know. Has the potential to impact, you know, all of the the things that you already know, critical areas and all of that. Um, if if you can't, if if it, if there's not mitigation available and you you, it's not mitigatable. Um, then then you have to do the full, the full S, but you, um, it 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 doesn't mean that. So let me back up, so we are, we are the the lead agency, so the. It it's it's our responsibility to, you know, uh, figure out what our determination is, whether it's, yeah, uh. Determination of non-significance, there's mitigations available, or it's a full EIS. Um, again, it's it's kind of hard to, to, for me to say, because I haven't gone down this path here. Um, you know, that that document has to be um vetted by ecology, but. How, which which portions of the the policies we're addressing, I I just, I I can't. I can't quite um give you a good example of of, you know, how that, how that would play out. I I know from, again, you know, California. Looking at, um, basically looking at the impacts of, so if we allow, you know. And this is more development regulations, but if we increase uh the the density. In, you know, in these certain parts of the the city, and that allows, you know, more bodies. What how, what's the mitigation? How how are we countering that? Or are we, are we just saying? This is what's gonna happen and there is no mitigation, but we think that this still provides benefit that the that the city. Wants to see, um, so I guess.
What I'm saying is like, we're at the policy level here with the comp plan. Um, and we might say at the policy, we might recommend to the city council that we wanna increase zoning densities. And then you're gonna, so that, so so now we've changed the the comp plan policy to encourage that type of behavior. There's gonna be a completely separate effort to go into the zoning code, and they're gonna point back up, I think, to the comp.
They have to be consistent.
And say, based on these new revised policies in the comp plan that the city council adopted, we're gonna do some development regulation changes too. Uh, and I, so maybe, maybe we all understand that and that's not important, but I just wanna make sure that we're level setting. Kind of like what sphere of influence we're in right now, which I think is the highest level of city planning. That, and then how it trickles down to Joe developer who wants to build, uh, you know, a three lot subdivision.
Right, so I think, and Bill alluded to to how this could, if if we addressed. And again, it's a big thing to get your arms around, let me have Bill. If we uh decided to go down the path of of an EIS. And say, okay, we expect that this could be the impact if if all these areas of the city, all these zone districts. Now we've taken the lit up density, and so instead of one house, there'll be four, whatever. This means this this many households could potentially, you know, live here, and what does that mean? If we have done that analysis and and played out what the impact. You know, could be and 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 have compared it to alternatives and, you know, maybe we only allow two houses instead of what, right? So you get all those, once we've done all of that analysis. Uh, Joe developer or homeowner that wants to develop, points to the analysis, it's already been done. They don't have to deal with CIPA, right? So that that's, that's, that's the benefit. There are other approaches that say, no, we want the developer to bear that burden. And look at those individual projects to see what those impacts are and and do their own CIPA analysis. So, I mean, that's, that's the trade off. Um, but again, until we get into what those policies are compared to what we have now, what we anticipate. You know, projections of, you know, how people are gonna move around. You know, it's 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 hard to say. Yeah, I'm not, but that, it it feels big in my head thinking about it right now, but that doesn't mean that it's, um, you know, it it's, it's been done. This is really interesting stuff, I will be talking about this a lot.
Um, the, under the, I think there was a state law passed, maybe the last session, that says we need to. Encourage cities to engage with tribes. Is there a plan to do that?
Oh, they'll be a part of this process, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, our tribe will be invited to that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yes, absolutely.
And then, um, I I think under GMA, you have to look, update your uh shoreline master program, your SMA.
Well, you look at it, you you don't, well, the shoreline element, um.
So that'd be a par- parallel, you know, I saw it in the checklist.
It it's, yeah.
Intending to update its shoreline master program?
I don't know that we need to. I I, what we're looking at is, so the the, we have the shoreline master program, and there are things, I mean, there, there's some. In the threshold for what requires a, you know, shoreline development, substantial development permit have have changed, so there are some, there are some changes in there. Um, but but the element, um, we have to look at at the, so they're sort of, they're sort of different. Uh, related, obviously, but we need to make sure that we're we're updated and and current with any changes in legislation. I have to, I have to look at the the checklist to see if there's anything specific to shoreline, go ahead.
The master program, though, we would not, we're not, we would not update the master program itself.
Right.
It's on a separate track.
Yeah.
Of, when it needs to be updated, we just did that, actually, I just finished that update, we were late. Uh, and I would just, if I could, just ask one question, though.
Yeah, come on in.
I didn't want to interrupt. Bill, I think Commissioner Jordan's question is really good, and I think Robin answered it very well. I thought he did a great job. Um, but I wonder, along those same lines, what? How how many, how how often have you gone or had to go to EIS? In your comp, in your experience with comp plans and other jurisdictions, because looking back through uh what we've done here in Gig Harbor over the years. I don't find any record of EIS, I'm not sure, ever. Uh, maybe one EIS way, way, way back, I think I found, but I don't see that that has ever happened, and I think that's kind of getting sort of to the heart of Commissioner Jordan's question. And so maybe you could enlighten us with your experience um throughout the jurisdictions.
Sure, hello, Carl.
I've been sitting quietly back here just listening, learning in the background, uh, but I couldn't help myself, I I have to speak.
Excellent.
Yeah, uh, rarely, rarely, I think, I think we've only written two integrated EISs with comp plans. Um, we've, we've done more integrated EISs with subarea plans, where there's a higher degree of project-related or master planning specificity. For a more more confined area. Uh, but sometimes we have done the integrated EIS, and that usually happens. Either in the work I've done or the stuff I've witnessed, when there is a high degree of transformation on the table. Like, hey, we need to really make an urban center pop here, and introducing new densities and new types. Um, with new demands on things like schools and roads and parks that you wouldn't otherwise expect. Um, or when there's a growth management hearings board uh tangle. And you just, you just really need to make sure you're you're crossing, crossing every T. So, um, so, you know, I think, I think we're keeping it out here as an option. Because of two things, we we don't yet know the extent to which things might change at the policy level. And if they're gonna change a lot, an EIS process gives us an opportunity to explore the degrees and types of changes that are on the agenda. And, um, we also don't know yet the quality. And recency of existing environmental documentation that may be a helpful tool to us as we go through the policy. So, you know, Robin said something that was, that was, that that particularly perked up my ears, and that's. You know, the change from what we have now, and that that, in my view, is something really important to acknowledge. As a, as our, as our, as our baseline, you know, if if we're generally content with the pattern that we've established. Um, then we're, we're probably, you know, not looking at an EIS. But if there are things we believe are gonna be changing, then. May have to dial into that a little bit more.
Can I shift gears yet again? I promise to keep these short, I think, um. Can you tell me, not so much how you define, but how you identify the TASs, the traffic analysis zones? And and the purpose of those, like?
Wow, I am, I am not the transportation expert here on our team.
I, are are we sort of talking in Gig Harbor, things like sixteen and Olympic? Kind of end to the Point Bostick area, that is kind of this big traffic node in our area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what, firm, um, so, I mean, is that? You may not know the answer based on what you just said, but is that our idea of what a traffic analysis zone is, or is it? If we change land use in this area, how does it, does, does that then define what our traffic analysis zone is?
Oh, we'll have to look, I don't, I don't know.
With engineering.
We'll, we'll check in with, yeah, our our senior engineer who's.
As much as I hate to open up a can of worms, record in a room. We are being mandated to address housing. Attainability, sustainability, of sustainability, of those things, which is going to impact. Well, number of units, and all that, and density, and all that, and and both to. To balance the community's concerns and the community's needs. And also limited transportation options that we have, we are going to end up, that's kind of where this question goes to. We're going to end up with these created, what I would view as traffic analysis zones, these areas, like where are our transportation routes? Exist, our our mass transit, kind of transportation routes, where might they intersect with multimodal transportation? And what kind of current land use do we have, availability do we have? That we could potentially put medium-density, middle housing in those areas, so they have access. To all of those things, and I'm not gonna go into my background and why this is. My thing, but it goes, my whole master thesis was based on this stuff, um. People want multimodal transportation options regardless of whether or not they use them to commute, they like the idea of them. Um, and so kind of access to those, to both is. Um, and so kind of access to those, to both is going to be one of those things where we want to put the middle.
Mm hmm.
Housing.
Absolutely.
So, but then that is still going to impact these. That's going to fundamentally change or define how traffic moves through those areas.
Absolutely. It impacts our, it impacts the traffic model overall. You know, we have a traffic model for the whole, for the, for the city that, you know, that. Um, that we run all developed it through, right, to make sure that it's meeting our level of standards. And that any of these, any of those changes that you're discussing and talking about there are certainly going to have impacts on that model. We've already been talking with our engineering department about that. Um, and Bill, uh, S D J, and I don't know how, I came in late, so I apologize, but. There's a a sub consultant.
Yeah.
That um, is the traffic engineers that will be looking at all of that and working hand in hand with. Bill and his team and us and you um, to ensure, you know, that we're capturing all of those, all of those things. So it's all, it all plays a part, right? It's all hand in hand. So all of, all of that will be discussed.
Yeah, and I think.
The next couple of years.
At our last meeting, we talked a little bit about, you know, the sort of negotiation and and, you know, why it took a little longer to. To get Bill's group on board and and we didn't understand, I certainly didn't understand. Uh, that even though our our transportation element is is four-ish, four, five years old. The modeling has changed because of COVID, because of people don't necessarily, you know, there's, there's more people working at home for now. Um, there, there's, there's just, the world has changed in terms of the work environment and and so. So a lot of those assumptions that were made even five years ago are not necessarily valid now. And so we could have, you know, situations where we accommodate folks who who work at home. And and look for housing types that that are, that are more amenable to that. Um, and so I I think our our traffic patterns, you know, if if. If this comes to fruition, will change, but in lots of different ways. I I have thrown that, I do this all the time because it's stuck in my brain, but the the four percent figure of folks that that work here. Uh, actually live here, if we could change that, you know, fewer cars on the road presumably. So all of these things, you know, are are of a piece, but. But all of it is is subject to to change, no matter what we do. And it's, it's making sure that we have our, our, our hands on the wheel to make sure we know that it goes in a direction that that of course with our. Our goals and values. But, yeah, transportation is going to be a big, a big piece. We'll be talking. Um, yeah, and at some point, you know, maybe we'll get the the engineering team to to talk about. Um, some of the, the modeling aspects, but that, um, yeah, we're, it's all on the table.
Can I shift gears?
Absolutely.
Do it.
Okay, Bill, uh, and Robin, there's a couple of things that are kind of intersecting here. Bill, I'm not sure you know, but we're doing a climate action plan here in Gig Harbor. And I I know that on the checklist, climate was kind of one of those things, well, this could be required. It's really kind of a good idea to do. It's not, it's in that kind of fuzzy area. It would seem to me, Bill, that perhaps we could work something collaboratively with. The contractor that's doing the climate action plan, so they may, as part of that plan, provide the grist. Of a climate action element for the comprehensive plan, if that should turn out to be directed by the city council or whoever does it.
We've been talking about that, and I have not talked to Bill about that, but I've been talking with with Roxy, who's uh spearheading that. Uh, that effort to turn that into, and it may, I think where we would look, you know, for Bill, uh, for Bill's input. A lot of it will just be staff work, because there are some of the elements that we have taken on responsibility. Um, and like I said, you know, gave some of the the heavy lifting uh job to to Bill, but um. What what I would like is is to again, make sure that that there's, there's a a flow, whether it's branding or whether it's just, you know, how the document looks. I will, will be working with Bill to make sure that it 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 looks like it's of a piece, but we intend uh at this. Point to adopt a climate action element, the climate element, I can talk, yeah.
So, yeah, if there's a, you know, synergy between the two of them, um, I don't think it would be a big, heavy lift to say, you know, for our climate action. Element, we probably need these five things and oh, maybe you could do hit those on the climate action plan as well.
Yeah, I was frankly surprised that that they didn't make it a required element. Um, I think that's, that's coming at some point. It should be required.
Legislature is discussing it right now.
Yes.
I think it's actually a.
Is it?
Actually a bill.
So making it part of the program.
Make it required.
Making it a, I I think an optional element, at least, or so not a required element, correct if I'm wrong. I think that's what that like that, how that bill reads is that they would actually make it one of the listed um optional elements now. So there's, there's, there's some required elements and you got optional elements, and then cities or local jurisdictions can create elements as well. So even without that, we can do a climate action um element if we like, just like our, uh, we have our harbor element. That's not, that's an element that's, that's made up. That's our own vision statement essentially for the, for the comp plan. Um, so we can do things like that as well.
So there, there, there are two things I just want to put out here uh to accompany this, this topic. Um, I'm not sure where the climate action plan is in its process. Um, but I'd extend an invitation to the climate action plan participants and to others. Who may be involved in other planning processes that are continuous with this. To all come together with the comp plan process and find ways to have collaborative events, if that's possible. So that someone who's interested in climate action can talk about a climate action. But also have an opportunity to maybe comment on land use or economic development. Or something else that is really relevant to the way the climate action plan may may see its strategy or implementation moving forward. So that's, that's one thing. You know, as part of my philosophy is that we shouldn't rely on the citizen to figure out if they need to talk to us about climate action plan and maybe show up on Thursday to talk about the comprehensive plan. We should actually be there in an event where a citizen who's interested in the future of the city can talk to us. And then we can figure out, you know, where to capture the appropriate policy. And then the the other thing um that that struck me with with that particular question is the relevance of the policy framework. So if you're doing a comprehensive plan, you know, we have this umbrella overarching policy that really is talking about everything that city is going to be doing. How it's spending its money, how it deals with land use permits, how it invests in transportation, how it prioritizes what gets done and what doesn't. Uh, and so what what we'll wind up being able to do is really take those climate policies that come out of that work. Uh, and make sure that they are embedded or informed or are appended to. Uh, policy that's coming out for the rest of the planning document. So, you know, and that that policy framework is something that is going to span. Whatever narrative we have for each of the elements, you know, the elements are going to tell the story. But the policy framework is going to have goals and policies that might have keys into multiple elements, because it makes sense. It just makes sense. So, so anyway, yes, I I I welcome any kind of involvement, climate action planning into this and. And whatever else might come up on the horizon. I mean, the city council may have some ideas about doing things that are really, really, you know, compelling. And how, how do we welcome that into this process as well? So I, any, anyway, I I certainly, certainly welcome that input.
Larry hasn't had a chance to say.
You know, go ahead. I'm I'm being kind of quiet because this process has just started. Uh, a lot of the questions we have tonight will be answered in the weeks to come. Um, you know, e- even the contractors trying to to flesh out what is truly required in the statement. So I, I I come out with strong contracting background. And so I I'm just kind of taking that approach, you know, talk to me about three months. Then then I might have some intelligent questions based on what your team has actually been doing.
Well, I I don't intend to ask a question intelligent or not, but I do have something I'd like to say. Uh, that the engagement of the citizens is really an important segment to me. And what I believe is that our residents. Driving up and down Burnham, going up to the wire Costco or something once a week or. Past new developments that really appall them because of the inadequate buffer zones, the clear cutting of trees. The uh ticky tack design and what is top most on their mind, I believe, when talking to them is. What can we do to prevent this from ever happening again in Gig Harbor? And what can we do to prevent similar kinds of development from occurring in the UGA's that we will someday inherit? So I I think in terms of the topics that the citizens will resonate. That that's close to the top of the list.
That and transportation. Because we're now finding situations where Highway sixteen is getting up at three o'clock before in the morning. And I have to think that's also a big issue on people's minds, also the traffic circle. Uh, Burnham, Oregon, Canterwood, Highway sixteen, that's a major issue for people. Because about once a week, I see a near, near miss in there, and I have to see, I have to think that's concerning a lot of people.
People are trying to hit me. We're gonna need a bigger roundabout.
You know, the other one that Commissioner Snodgrass spoke to earlier was the difficulty of getting, getting through Olympic Drive sometime trying to get on the freeway. I ran into that this afternoon, just gridlock.
Yeah, that that is the the state of growth in our community. I live a while and a half. It took me almost fifteen minutes to get me because it's rush hour. You know, through the freeway interchange and backs up. And and these are the kinds of things where solutions are extremely difficult.
Yes.
Our, our community is spread out so much that we're, we're virtually a hundred percent reliant on passenger cars. And and I don't see that changing in any meaningful way. We might get intermodality on there, but. It won't meet that much of the transportation need because of the dispersion of the community.
That brings up another question. And that is, we have got some very unique terrain issues and geographical issues. We're sitting here on a peninsula. So it's not too easy to have a transportation uh solution that goes in. One direction, everything is this direction. We've got one major arterial and that's probably all that we're ever going to have, and that's Highway sixteen. So I think these are some things that have to be kept in mind uh as we develop this plan is how are we going to cope with some of these things?
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, some of it, you know, and some of the, some of the areas that you guys are are talking about is um just. Let's save the conversation and um maybe you know, a lot of that is wash shot issue, right? Even even the point Bostic uh Olympic area, a lot of the problem there actually lies, relies on us dealing with wash shot and getting. Actually getting washed out to deal with us, I think is really what it comes down to. And, you know, we we ask, we've been asking every legislative session for help, you know, from the legislature to fix some of these problems. We, we do have plans to fix the issue over at Walachin. Uh, so there's going to be some changes going on over there, both on Wash Dot's side and on our side, luckily. Um, so that's coming soon. Uh, there's actually money in the budget for both of those, so that's good news. Um, but, you know, again, a lot of it is just trying to get, so I, you know, Mr. Jordan brought this up, that, you know, bringing Wash Dot to the table and some of this, I think, is important. And I think I I I think it is. Getting them to work with us, I think is, you know, that's, that's tougher to do, you know, it's just, it just is, and, you know, they're a big agency, so. Um, but those are, those are challenges and maybe there is some way, you know, that we can get creative in the comp plan to at least address some of those challenges in there. Through some of our goals and policies and, but there's not a lot of. I don't, I don't know that there's a lot that we'll be able to do or make actionable immediately, right? Aside from getting washed out and take some action.
Is there any discussion uh on Capitol to expand the lanes in sixteen? Say from the bridge out past. Gordon.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of anything like that. There's some, there's some Goldberg projects coming through that are going to make a, make traffic a little bit more challenging in the future. Um, sorry, I need to hijack the conversation. I just wanted to throw that out there just so everybody's true knowledge.
Well, I hope we'll look at the, whether it, the things like interlocal agreements with the other agencies. Might be useful, especially in managing activity in the UGA's before they are annexed. And I think there, there is room for progress there.
Yeah, I think you indicated, uh, Robin, that uh there was some work.
Yeah.
Or uh, something underway in that to try to get them to. Plan more consistently with our students.
Talking about Pierce County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, there are discussions sort of ongoing. I had a meeting actually with their, with the director just recently to talk about that very thing. It's a little, didn't get a lot of traction, the conversation didn't get as much traction, um, but, you know, those. Katrina started those conversations previously. We're trying to kind of keep them going. They're dealing with a lot of turnover and change at Pierce County right now, so it's kind of hard. It's definitely, I think, an uphill battle to get, maybe get some focus on that.
We've got to try that in the council.
That's right.
We do now. That's correct.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Good point.
So I I certainly haven't, we're not dropping the conversation. I'm just, you know, I just had that conversation, Jeff Langenhelm, the community development director, and I had that conversation. I think two weeks ago, we had the director over to Gig Harbor and. And I have sort of introduced ourselves and started to kind of mix and inroads. So hopefully we can kind of get that, get something going. So I think that's a fantastic point. I think it's absolutely necessary and something that Gig Harbor's been trying to do for a really long time, so.
Is there a planning group that uh Pierce County has that kind of looks at this area? Kind of similar to.
Yeah, the peninsula, um, a peninsula.
Is there any possibility of ever having a joint meeting?
I think they're absolutely.
Yeah.
Or, or we could have a member of that commission from Big Garden.
Yeah.
Or is that within Gate Harbor, someone who lives close by?
Yeah, they oversee the Peninsula Community Plan, which is a part of the Pierce County Comp Plan, essentially. There's, I think, seven or eight of those community plans throughout um throughout Pierce County. And with each of those, there's a commission that sort of oversees their goals and policies. And so when there's a a development going on in the UGA area. That's oftentimes presented to that commission, kind of like a, kind of like a planning commission in some ways. Although our planning committee can operate that with some.
Yeah, because what they do affects us and what we do is going to affect them.
You bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think that's definitely, I think that's definitely somebody to add to the list for sure for for this process.
Yeah.
They should definitely be included. I think that's a really good point.
Anything else from the group? No, not related to the.
I think it is.
Not related to this topic, because uh when we get done with this topic, then I'd like to uh let Bill go here and uh get back to his family. And then we can take up other issues if we have them. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Good to be upon, Bill.
Hey, thank, thank you very much. Thank you for the conversation and also for putting up with my uh switch of venue here. In mid throw. Bill, I'm totally familiar with that because I've had that happen to me a couple of times here, trying to tune into this particular meeting when we were. Uh, virtual, so I know exactly the feeling. Well, op- option three was going into my car and using my phone. All right. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Same here.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Okay, um, so I think it, uh, we're, we're all done with that issue. And uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, let's see, I gotta make sure that my agenda is straight here because that's the business. Uh, so we've got, uh, the next meeting is uh March second, uh, twenty twenty-three Urban Forestry.
Actually, we're going to be doing a tree ornament study session and climate action plan engagement plan and schedule.
Okay.
That just changed after we got that out, so.
All right, very good. And so I'll open that up for other business then. Anything, yes.
Uh, so I just, I, I was looking for a, an email from our county council member that represents Gate Harbor. And she, I think it's the same thing, the Gate Harbor Planning Land Use Advisory Commission. So, so yeah, I didn't, I didn't know they existed. Uh, it'd be good to connect.
They meet in this room now, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And do they have their six over here, cover?
Maybe not.
Oh, okay.
Uh, they have, you have to, they have a website, yeah, you can go to Pierce County, go to Pierce County website. Uh, and do a search and they've got their own page there, so their schedule and what they're going to review, their agendas are posted there.
Yeah, uh, yeah, this came from uh, Councilman. Dennis, I mean, I think in our monthly newsletter, it's where I saw it. But it's the uh, Gate Harbor Peninsula Land Use Advisory.
It's quite the name.
The Luac.
Yeah.
And use advisory commission, so those Luacs are throughout Pierce County and all related to those community. Lands within those areas, which, which basically are the, they're sort of the, the keepers of the policy. That then leads into the implementation, so they still have zoning codes they have to follow within those unincorporated areas. But these are policies that are more specific to these.
Some areas around the region, UGAs are required. Somebody who wants to develop in a UGA has to have like approval from both. Jurisdictions. Because it's sort of written in that they have to kind of agree.
Usually, well, in my experience, usually the, where I, in my experience, it's been, there's a separate set of standards within. Like in this instance, if Pierce County's code that relate to just our UGA that they have to follow. In some cases, they might need some approval from, say, our engineering. Shared infrastructure or the, the, the boundary lines running down the middle of the road or. Or this, or the, the arterial happens to be within the city while the development is outside the city in the UGA. So they have to meet our uh, our frontage improvement standards, our road standards and those sorts of things, so that, that does, that does.
My experience is mostly the first and increasing.
Okay, yeah, they, maybe they, maybe they're, maybe it's written a little bit differently down there, I'm sure.
I think it's sort of what we were talking about, but they butt up against each other.
Yeah.
In some areas that have kind of a lot of development.
Okay.
Yes.
Back to the Gate Harbor Peninsula, the part that was throwing me off, there's also right below that, there's the Key Peninsula Land Use Advisory Commission. So there's two, so one had Gate Harbor in it, that's where I was.
So Key Peninsula has a community plan as well.
Keep, keep, and it's the land use advisory commission.
There must be, they must have a key plan, I wasn't aware of that, actually.
That would be a lot less impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that Luac has a defined boundary.
It does.
Yeah, okay.
Ones just before the peninsula and ones after you get. The Key Peninsula, I guess.
Two of the things, I'm, I'm obviously got a lot of energy, cause I missed a couple. So apologies for missing a couple to my commissioner and city staff, take this serious, my son was playing basketball, he's only a one year left, so I want to watch it. Um, and then just a, maybe a, a special, I don't know, stretch request, maybe it's a COVID thing. But this feels really, really tight to me, so uh, request for, and I look at the fact that we're in person.
Yeah.
And my, my commissioners are awesome, they showered. I'm hungry, but is there an opportunity to change the configuration to give us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, yeah, the room is ours to whatever feels comfortable. Just wanna space it out. You don't wanna be sort of, yeah. You are allowed to take your, your nameplate and live anywhere you wish. That's true.
Thank you.
Yes. You can accommodate that.
Okay, anything else, anybody wants to bring up this evening?
Yeah, um, Rob and you were, had some conversations with management, didn't you, about us bringing forward different topics, you have a.
We're, we're still talking, I've made that known to the powers that be. I'm trying to figure out what that looks like, if it's, cause you talked about uh, like a more formal sort of approach. Like a scheduled thing versus, you know, something that's a little less formal or structured. Um, it will happen and I will get back to you. But I don't, I don't have anything firm to report tonight.
Is Carl a problem?
Yeah, I think, I think we all know the, the Carl in the room problem. Yes, no.
There you guys have the conversation.
I, I know, no, it, it. It is, it is in process, I promise, it hasn't been, you know, put in the dead letter pile, it's, it's happening, it's just logistical and. Yeah. It's happening.
I, I'd like to ask you, uh, it would be possible during the new business segment of one of our meetings. They have kind of a roundtable discussion led by the staff on topics that address. Uh, resident concerns about development. Like, how much latitude and flexibility do we have to tighten up? Uh, regulations and standards to uh, achieve. Wider buffers, less clear cut, different design requirements so that. We can get away from some of this tiki tack development, and I, I just like to get a, you know, kind of an expert's view of. Of what, what's possible there, so we don't go spinning our wheels and, you know, maybe focus on, on what's possible and not. Spend time on things that aren't likely to bear fruit. So is, is that something we could do during a new bus, the new business segment of some future meeting?
I will always engage. If you, if you are, if you have something that you're, you know, wanting to, to discuss during. The portion, this portion of the agenda and, and you have a question for me, I will, I will always. Engage with you, again, it was just, it was, you know, putting something on the agenda specifically, right?
That is, could, could we simply. Uh, schedule that so that you could prepare and kind of lead a discussion of. How flexible are our standards and regulations in terms of development? I think, can I?
Yeah, please.
So, while I like, I like, I, I, I like the idea, I think it's a good idea, I think. Um, where it gets sticky is in. Staff preparing for that discussion, because that's taking staff time away from other items that we're working on. And if council were to direct that, for instance, then of course, staff would then go and do that and we would bring that back to you, but. That's, that's beyond, that's beyond staff's, our purview to be able to. Do for you without being directed, if that makes sense, also. Um, and maybe this helps. But what you're talking about really is going to be captured in this comprehensive plan update that we're working on now, so.
It involves regulations as well as just the policy.
Well, and that's what the policy and goal is, lead to the implementation and, and the, and the, and the standards. So if we, for instance, just taking your example of wider buffers, for instance, if that's something that the community desires. Then that's something that we go into uh, the comp plan in, in the, in the proper locations. That would be a goal, we would have some actions then to come out of it, and then we go to look at our zoning standards after the comp plan is adopted. We would be looking to find places to implement that standard there, so you're, I think. I think you're on the right track with what you're asking for, I think that it's, but maybe it's a little cart before the horse, so.
Don't we have eventually urban forestry coming up anyway?
Oh, yeah, and, and, yeah, that you will, I think, be, be very happy with. Uh, the, some of the language that will be coming to you with um, the tree ordinance, which is. Very, very different, very, very robust compared to what we have on the books now and applies.
That I think would be an appropriate place to address your, your issue.
We'll be talking about that in two weeks.
It's, it's broader than trees, I mean.
I understand.
I will, I will then uh. Simply ask questions during new business in the future, you won't have to. Be your best answer.
I can always, I can always come up with something.
Give you questionable, questionable opinion.
Absolutely.
That's, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, and it should go without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that, you know, if you have. Uh, folks that are, you know, have questions about anything that they're seeing, if it's, if it's a done deal, it's not much I can do about it. But if, if people have specific concerns, I mean, I, I do answer my phone.
I wonder, uh, so the develop I'm thinking of is about Little League fields. The, 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 the development I'm thinking of is the Little League field, next to the Little League fields. Gate Harbor Little League.
Just above the, the roundabout?
Yeah. I mean, the, it's those houses that, that, my guess is your, are on your list of concern. And I'm wondering if you could like, what, not do any special presentation, but can you walk us through that development that, like, that this. The regulations or, I mean. Um. Uh, talk out of both sides of my mouth, it'd be helpful to understand like how a development like that can you permit it in Gate Harbor? Um, and you could pick one of those, those subdivisions there, so it's not a whole lot of work, but just walk us through like the, what was, what? What the developer asked for originally and what through the development regulations you ultimately approved.
Sure.
I don't know if that's something that you do, and I'm gonna talk out of the other side of my mouth. That is probably the most affordable housing we have here, so while it's tiki tacky to us. And it is tiki tacky to me, it's probably the cheapest houses we have here, and we have to be thoughtful about that too, so. I mean, that's, that's a solution or, or, or a way for us to better understand. So that when our neighbors and friends ask us, how could Gate Harbor let something like that kind of development happen? We would be armed with a little bit more insight from the city's perspective.
I, I, I really like the idea, I like the way you frame that. I think that's certainly, that we could bring back um, for discussion, sort of an example. I think that would be actually really useful, uh, if we can frame that around this comp plan.
Tying into the policies that, that are, we don't think are working or need to be tweaked, absolutely.
And you're talking exactly about the dilemmas that we're facing. How do we preserve the environment and provide affordable housing? That is a dilemma.
The, the two places that I think you might be talking about are around the border. And those are not low end. One of those subdivisions, the rent start at three thousand a month. And the other one, I consider ten, you're talking about eight, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that is, that is our affordable housing in Gate Harbor.
Is that the one across the street from the one he was talking about? Yeah, cause that one has other problems too, have you ever looked at a backyard, how steep that is, how would you mow that lawn?
I'll, I'll, I'll say one of the, uh, just, just really briefly, um, that subdivision in particular, uh, that we're talking about, McCormick Creek. Uh, and then also Harbor Hill, uh, and those, you know, really larger subdivisions that were permitted over the last ten years. Uh, they were done differently and they were done in a way that can't be done for our code today, so I just wanna throw that out there, so, so because that. That plays into the, the previous council already recognized this as an issue and. Made it so that it can't happen again in Gate Harbor, so getting to that point now. Could we go back and change that to allow it to happen again in Gate Harbor? Absolutely, that could be done, could we make it? Less able to happen again, we could also do that and make it more difficult.
Then one thing you just said is very. Because these are the kinds of comments we hear when we're out. And if we can say, yes, we know this happened and, and as a city we're taking steps to stop it in the future. That would be huge.
Very good point.
This is exactly what we were talking about with the community engagement and with the comp plan. It's getting the community to understand that their input in this directly shapes how it feels to live here. And how they, how happy they are with it and, and what some of these developments look like. And where the higher density housing is going to go in and all of those things, it's getting people to understand. That, but also getting them to understand these conflicting. Goals that we have to achieve and finding that, I mean, just because. You are shooting a dart and moving target doesn't mean you don't try. You just continue, you adjust, and so we are doing our best job to zero in and to plan out, okay? What's our best shot for getting as close to that hole's eye as we can?
Right, and everybody is talking about this. Our, we are, we have many, many unique attributes, but the types of. The balancing and the, you know, maintaining character, what makes us Gate Harbor and not some other community. Everybody's having the same conversation in a different context, so. So the other, you know, thing that we will be doing when we start talking about this, continue to talk about this. Is to bring in, even though they're not Gate Harbor, some other community found something that worked for them. Maybe we can tweak that and have it work for us.
Part of why I was concerned about, that he had worked with communities that have some similar concerns, cause like twelve is not like.
No, 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 but you know, polls go, I mean, some of the smaller, right?
You have lack of availability of transportation.
Transportation.
All of these things, so that's, I wanted to know they had the experience with those kinds of communities.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't remember that on there.
He's been doing it for a really, really, really long time.
I can see polls will have some common elements and Edmonds would have some common.
That's a good comparison. No, I. Right, but the pieces, the lack of, of, you know, transportation infrastructure options. Everybody has the affordability issue, but. Um, yeah.
Everybody has the same geographic. Developments or the shoreline and, and environmental concerns that, that exist here.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's hard to make those comparisons though too, right, and that's, that's what, you know, I, we. We always end up in this discussion about what would we compare ourselves to, and almost every time we get into these land use discussions, we start thinking, oh, yeah. And it gets really difficult to do because, and so you have to think about the context of each community, every community is sort of struggling with the same sort of. Questions really generally globally, but then in their own context, it's a little bit different.
Where, again, it comes back to the community engagement, it's getting people's ideas of how do you define. Gate Harbor, how do you want Gate Harbor to be defined?
Right.
And then building as much of that into this greater document.
Right, and that's what, you know, I mean, the survey questions will have, you know. What do you love about living here? What do you hate about living here? What would you change? I mean, they, you know, with the very broad sort of. You know, day to day, think about your experience and then we get into.
Do we have questions that will get people thinking about what creates a sense of place?
I think what you just said eventually, what do you want? And I'll paraphrase what you just said, what do you want Gate Harbor to look like? Is the starting point for all of us. That's where we get these people who are complaining about the developments, you know, they cut all the trees down.
Right.
The buffer zones.
You ever. Talk to people who are in the market for a house, they tell you what they want and then you take them around to these houses and they, that meet those criteria exactly, they don't like it. And then you have to figure out what they really wanted, I think that's why I was asking about getting to a, like.
Feeling some layers.
Yeah, getting to that sense of place, because people say what they want to feel, but. What are actually the key elements for them that create a sense of place, for like, to me? So I, I moved back here from just outside of DC. And Annapolis and Georgetown, both have these amazing sense of place because they have integrated. New and old, and they made sure anything new respected the old, but. They didn't necessarily make the new. Look like the old in every situation, but that mix of things actually creates this. It, it is part of what creates this sense of place. As does street skating. Sideboard, yeah.
Yeah.
Getting to the, to the sort of mainstream.
Yeah.
Dialogue a little bit.
Yeah, Annapolis has the advantage of, you know, few hundred years existence and stuff, but I love, I went to.
Let me try a question, Robin, won't require any staff time. In your professional opinion, how likely is it in the next ten years? For the, the city to be uh, pressured to annex more and more of the UGAs? For the the city to be pressured to annex one or more of the UGA's? Or how likely is it that the city will see a benefit to doing that the next time? Is it likely to happen or is that something that you professionally think isn't likely?
Professional, you know, again, I I my tenure here is short. I it's the purpose of the UGA to, you know, it 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 things change. But I mean, that's, that's what the UGA is for, to to, you know, it it's just how that's done. And it doesn't always happen, but I I I think, I think it's likely. If I were to, if I were to bet, but, I mean, again, that's where development is supposed to happen. It's just that cost benefit, what are we putting out versus, you know, what's the benefit to us? There's another interesting issue though about, you know, dividing communities. Do you have, um, and I still with this in California, if you have development just on the outside of your border, but that's really part, becomes part of your community or whatever, maybe there's a church or schools or whatever. Then it makes sense to me to to eliminate those sort of artificial barriers, if you will. That's just sort of my philosophical uh perspective, but I, I I think that that will, that will come.
I mean, just one quick follow up question. How likely is it that uh the UGA's will uh address affordable housing?
I don't understand the question.
Yeah.
You mean accommodate?
If, if they aren't annexed, how likely do you think it is that affordable housing will be developed in the UGA? Territory.
If they're not annexed, if they remain.
Prior to annexation.
Aren't those based on the size of the city? I mean, if you're a size of a city of X thousand people, then you have to do.
Right, right, well, if it's not part of that law, then I think.
There's examples where King County is, no, no city has wanted to incorporate areas. And so King County has went in and made drastic zoning regulation changes that allow, you know, multifamily, things like that. In unincorporated areas of of King County, but I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
And it has happened in your. Spanway and places like that, right? But they have been getting their, starting to get their hands slapped as well, right? Because the idea there is that if you're going to create that sort of density in those areas, then it's supposed to be annexed. And it's supposed to get annexed, but the cities don't want it at that point, right? So then you've kind of got broadly of a conundrum.
Well, yeah, because if you put density in an area that doesn't have supporting services.
Right, well, the supporting services have to come if they're going to build that density there. I I think here it's very unlikely that we would see that happen. We'll see it happen first in Gig Harbor painfully. In some, maybe in some ways, if it gets to that point, we've dodged a bullet in this legislature, in this lit, in this session just recently. Because the middle housing bill was a substitute bill exempts cities under twenty five thousand. So that won't be, that middle housing will not be. This time around. Um, we're still, uh, like, we're smart, we're still advocating against it. Uh, for other cities that are going to fall into it, uh, like still come places like that that are, that are at that threshold and would still get hit with this. But there's some other bills that will affect, it's like the splitter bill, that's still, you know, it's making its way to the floor. Baby U bills, that's a biggie.
Yeah.
Those, those chains, you know, start talking about transportation modeling, those are big.
Right, so that is a really important part of this conversation as well, moving forward is, we can talk about, you know, we don't want this, we do want this, but in the back of our minds, we need to be mindful that it may be imposed on us whether we want it or not. So the more we can get our arms around it ahead of that and guide it where we want to and have it get our, you know, get some control over that while we can, because at some point, and like California experience, yeah, uh, every lot you can split by right, doesn't go through the subdivision process. ADUs by right, don't have to meet parking standards in a lot of cases. And, you know, everybody went like this and then the legislature said, okay, you don't, you don't get to to choose anymore. So we don't want that to the, to the extent that we can avoid that. So accommodating is kind of, is kind of a fun balancing that we get to do. But, but be mindful that, that the pressure is out there for us to do something, so.
And because of that pressure, something that we can think about in this process, it's something we need to think about in this process, are areas of opportunity. To say, here's where that group could go, where that we can, we can defer it essentially, right? And say that we've already planned for it, here's where we want it to be. And so this is where, here's your opportunity developers and they're going to take the path of least resistance then, right? To do it there rather than here, so that's what this process is all about.
Density allows us to target where you're going to change density.
But some boundaries around that. Yeah.
You know, something along those lines that Gig Harbor's been really with that. Or something that you alluded to earlier when you were, when you're talking. And so that's, you know, that's something that we've been talking about internally and something that we need to approach, you know, Bill with and get some, his, his opinion on that and then, you know, get all of your opinions on that, then give the community's opinion on that and see where it goes, you know, if it, if it goes. Because again, it's the community's plan.
Right.
So the community has to decide what this thing is and where they want to live. So all we can do is say, here's, here's some best, here's some, here's some good ideas, maybe, here's some best guesses. Here's some, um, you know, best practices, those sorts of things. And here's, here's some, I, you know, here's some ideas that have worked in other communities. And then see what, what sticks and what direction it goes, it's really exciting when you think about it. Really an exciting time for Gig Harbor and especially because I think this time around especially, more so than the last few complan updates. It's going to be a, I think it it requires a really, really big holistic look. Because the community has changed so much over the last ten, fifteen years. And it's looking to continue to change over the next ten to twenty years. Um, and because of the housing issues that, you know, the region is faced with, because of the transportation issues that we're faced with as a result. Um, this complan cycle is just monumentally important. And so I, you know, to Robin's point earlier, I was trying to sit back here and be quiet and out here and I'm just talking away, uh, sorry, Michelle. Um, this complan cycle, you know, usually we take the checklist from Commerce and we're going to look at these things. And so, okay, here's what we have to do and then here's a few other things that we're going to do and tweak and then look through. This time, you know, there's, there's definitely a, a, a want on the city's part. And I think the community's part, so I'm not just talking about city government, I'm talking about the city as a whole. There's a want and desire to really look at the comp plan and look at, look at the vision of the city from, you know, from soup to nuts, as it, as it, as it were. So maybe even opening up that harbor and talking about the vision again, is our vision. Are we what that says? So is that still what people want?
Carl, I heard in the city council meeting about the STRs that they suggested, or they kind of inferred that we will also be looking at that again, I mean, the company's plan update.
Yeah.
So that's on the. So you have, you're going to be leaving that in somehow, or we are going to be leaving that in?
Well, and and so that's, that's true, but I don't think we'd be looking at short term rentals specifically. We're looking at housing and that's a housing and lodging type. And so we would be considering that in, when we're talking about housing in general in Gig Harbor. And what is uh available for polls? So if we're talking about how much affordable housing do we need in Gig Harbor? How, what do we have otherwise, right? When you talk about housing, how many hotel rooms, motel rooms do we have in the city? Where can people stay? Short term rentals have to be part of that equation, albeit right now a small part of that equation. Uh, but what's the potential maybe for that? Uh, so yeah, it's woven in, but not so specifically that we would be saying.
It was mentioned several times, it was mentioned more than once.
It was, yeah, well, because, and again, back to my, what I was just saying about the comp plan and how monumental this comp plan update is. And how pivotal, how pivotal a point we are at in Gig Harbor, I think everything's on the table. So we've been saying that for a lot of things when people bring stuff up, you know, and ask questions, well, the comp plan update's coming up. So this is the time to talk about that, you know, we got, I, we, the downtown waterfront alliance. They've got a lot of concerns about uh small business survivability in Gig Harbor. And, you know, and what our downtown looks like, what's going on, depends on the shopping center. That's part of their purview down there, right? What are these, you know, what are our parking, our parking standards are hindrance? Um, what's the streetscape supposed to look like, thinking about creating place? Downtown Waterfront Alliance is thinking about all of, you know, all of, all of those, all of those issues as well. So it all, it all sort of fits together and short term rentals also impacts businesses downtown in some way. So if you eliminate that, eliminate short term rentals altogether, if, if it's true or not, I don't know. But there is a perception that that would impact small businesses downtown. Because they believe that during the summer, they get a lot of business from those folks who are staying in the short term rentals. I believe that's probably partially true, you know, there's, there's an element of truth in everything, so. Um, so they, yeah, so absolutely, they fit into the discussion, just not so specifically.
Well, I, I just want to say that I think in terms, I think working on the vision was really important. And I think that as we, as priorities vary, housing, transportation and others, we may see that there's a solution or a vision that incorporates UGA's and annexation and solutions to some of those problems. And that's really what I, one of the things I plan to advocate while I'm here.
I think it's a, I think it's a very good point. Uh, and and to Bill's point earlier about other plans and things that are going on. You'll recall one of the plans that we, I need to tweak because council wanted to make a tweak before they adopted it. It was that UGA analysis, the, the UGA analysis and the guidelines for annexation that you all reviewed. Probably feels like, feels like years ago now, I think.
I remember it.
Yeah, it's been kind of sitting on the shelf waiting to be done and I was getting ready to write up a resolution and bring that to council. Um, and uh, some council members wanted to talk about it at a study session before it came to a meeting. So there was a, a tweet that they wanted to make, so I had to go in and make that, make the, make the tweet to the, to the plan. But that's one of those plans that will play into this. The climate action plan, urban forest management, planning, housing needs assessment that we're working on. There's a lot of policy documents that are at work and that will be at play. And so we've got, so in that way, it's great because we have, we have some guidelines already. We've already got some process done that fits into this, at least a lot of the background, you know, a lot of the nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
To rely on to say, where, you know, demographics, for instance.
This is a valuable conversation to have, and a kind of ad hoc discussion. It may help me broaden my expertise in these areas. That's a great idea.
Good.
Yeah, I think it gives us also my idea, an idea where some of us are coming from in terms of what we want. We think.
Yeah.
You guys think as well.
Bill is taking notes, I'm taking.
Chair, I move to adjourn.
Can, can, can I?
Yeah.
And maybe, I don't know if we want to do this or we want to wait until we have a full commission.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yeah, so um, I was uh talking to Jennifer Harrow, our parks director. And um, the Crescent Creek master plan is, is in some motion. Uh, I haven't been, uh, Roxanne, Roxy Robles is the staff planner assigned to that. Uh, but they are looking to uh form a community committee and would like to know if any of the commissioners are interested in participating and being on that committee.
I'm sorry, to define or accomplish what?
Crescent Creek Park, master plan, so ideas.
So like what trails or plaques or what elements?
What are they going to do with it? There's a folks that, you know, have very strong feelings about what should stay, what should, what should be coming in.
And we're expanding the park. We own a parcel just to the north of these.
Right, speaking of annexation.
And the Masonic Lodge.
Did the city get the twenty three acres?
Uh, that's adjacent to Crescent Creek, I don't know how big it is.
Know how big it is.
Wait, no. That's, that's a difference.
Is that different?
So I don't know how big that is.
Okay.
No.
No, that's donkey, that's donkey. There you go, Masonic Temple is actually, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yes.
Other side of the heart.
Yep. So I'm just, I said that I. It should be an interesting process, but if you want to think about it and then you can get back to me, we can talk about it again. But there is uh, uh, they're planning on having uh some sort of outreach uh meeting, workshop thing uh, the week of March twentieth, so if anybody is interested, let me know. Let somebody here know and um, and we'll give your name to Jennifer and have her reach out to you.
Robin, does that come to the commission anyway at some point?
I don't think so, because it, yeah, it's, I don't think so. Yeah.
Mission will be the, probably, I, I don't think, because there's no, there's no change to the comp plan, there's no change to zoning code. And it's not really a policy document that would affect either of those, so.
Happy to, you know, keep you, keep you informed and let you know what's going on as, as it moves forward. But um, if there's a member of the commission that wants to be a part of the community committee, they can also report to you. All right, that's the end of my, my heart's out.
So you want to restate your vote, you do adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second, second, okay, all of the papers say aye.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you very much.